Okay.
Who's G, you know?
Okay, I'd like to call the Dover Select Ward Meeting to order on Tuesday, January seventeenth at six thirty-one P M. And I will take couple of comments for the board. Travis, I know you want to speak to us.
Yes, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. So, I'm sure everybody heard Friday the thirteenth wasn't very good for the highway department. We had a truck get overturned on the slippery ice. Um, no damage was done to the truck and our operator is okay. The truck will be back in service and our operator is back to work, so.
That's good news, Travis.
Yes, we we had very good luck with in both aspects. Everybody's okay and equipment is too, so.
Good. Um, is there anything else you want to tell us about? Or is that it?
Uh, no.
Okay.
That's it this time. Yeah.
Well, we will be getting a towing bill.
Yep, you'll be getting a towing bill. I'm looking in to see, we had a small amount of damage to the door and mirror, but I don't know if it's gonna be worth doing the fifteen hundred dollar deductible now, so I'm getting an estimate on that. And then we'll go from there.
Great. Keep this.
Yep. Yep, will do.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to say under public comments? If not, we'll move on to unfinished business. And on the agenda tonight, it says we're gonna consider the approval of the twenty-three, twenty-four budget. I, we were only given the fire department's amended budget this afternoon. It is up significantly, and I think we need to have a meeting to discuss it with the fire chief. Um, it, so I don't think we can really move on the budget today. Um, because it it changes dramatically. Yes.
I thought Richard was going to be there, so.
That's.
And he is.
Um, but this is really a budget, that's for a budget meeting.
Right, no, but.
So, Rich, we need to schedule a budget meeting to go over the fire department budget?
Cool.
Yeah, uh, we need to do it quickly.
All yours.
Tell us when, when it works for the board. Jeanette, do we have to have a forty-eight hour warning?
No, but especially me, it's twenty-four.
Can we meet sometime on Thursday? Friday?
Friday.
Okay, um, we don't know what days.
No, I mean, I need either day, there's just a bulk meetings or.
About the board, when can you guys meet?
I can't do probably.
Okay. Um, let's try to figure out the time for Thursday. Joe?
Can do during the day like that.
How late in, how early in the evening do we do it?
Four.
Four?
Thursday, yes, six thirty meeting.
At night?
Yeah.
If we do that four?
Yeah, depending on weather, you know, if it's snowing.
We can do it zoom.
Doesn't matter, can't zoom long drive.
Plus, that would be challenging. Dan, Thursday work?
So Monday, I'll, I'll send you that for the Sunday morning, what on the meeting is on.
Okay.
We have a tax sale here on Thursday at nine thirty in this room, so.
We'll be, we're looking at four, four o'clock in the afternoon. Yeah, we're looking, because Joe can't make it anytime before four. So. Eight, eight? But for how long?
Is that one of you needing for color back in the office, not looking for that?
Okay, no, we we do need to, because we were ready to, you know, look at, we were done with our budget, but now it's changed. Uh, I did have a question of the library as well, so. But yeah, if you want us, give us the time that you could meet on Thursday, that would help, and hopefully it's, we can squeeze you in between your other meeting. Thank you, I think that's all.
That all you need?
Yep.
Cool, and then I just, I give him, um, Jeanette the personal policy stuff for fire department.
Okay.
And I know, you know, it was too late, we just approved it last time to the officers, but we're hoping that I can get on the agenda for the next meeting, if there's any questions in between. Um, you know, when you know we try to take all the stuff out, it's really in for pain or for more, um, maybe.
Is the first meeting in February okay for them?
Yeah, okay, I just, if you have an respectful meeting in between, if you do it before that, that would be even better.
We're hoping not to, because the town force needs to get to the printer.
Yeah, okay.
So, yeah, that's great, if you want to go check on that.
Okay.
And or you can text me.
I'll text you. Thank you.
Um, and then the library, do you know Scott was gonna reach out to them?
Yeah, he said he was.
Uh, their budget has a six percent increase for administrative jobs, and that's kind of out of line with our town employees, so we're, although we can't, but we can't.
We can't believe you.
We we can, we can advise them what the town employees are getting, and then they can make the decision. Or if there's other reasons why their payroll is, you know, their line item is somewhat is high, they should tell us about it.
Or they're more hours instead of it being.
Right, what is it, wage, high wage? Okay, so we're gonna skip over all the budget meeting, all the budget tonight.
Oh.
Have you guys seen the the fire department budget?
Yeah, okay, it's in there.
Okay, see, that's, I didn't think people would have an opportunity, and we certainly haven't been able to go line by line with, um, the fire chief.
No.
Um, okay. Next, we're gonna revisit the parking lot agreements for one seventy-one and one eighty-three Vermont Route one hundred.
So, Rich supplied me with the numbers that he got for finding those lots for the season, the lot behind the andirons of one eighty-three or American Flapford, the one that we use for the apartment, probably trade will be five hundred dollars for the season. The one at one seventy will be used for Horace Hill would be five hundred and twenty-five for the season. I ran those numbers by Travis this morning, he thinks that they are very reasonable for a season's worth of planning. Um, my request to you would be that we pay the five hundred and the five twenty-five for this season to allow us to come to an agreement this summer on how we will be proceeding, proceeding with that. I know that we've said that we don't need to file the lot for the park during the winter, uh, I don't necessarily agree, I have seen people using the park. Uh, I think that we, if if that, we're going to advertise that as parking for our park and for the Valley Trail, and we need to have that lot open. That's my opinion.
Plus, we do use it in the summertime, so there should be some, something, uh, because we do, we do certainly, uh, use it for the concerts, it's well-used for concerts, so. Um, and it's just, I mean, that's nice that they let us use it, so.
We don't need to motion that, we just.
Yeah, I can push it, push it.
So we make a motion that we authorize economic development to pay up to one thousand twenty-five dollars for plowing at the two lots at the Dover.
So, for this season. The twenty-two, twenty-three, we're there, yes. Okay, any other discussion? Yes.
That includes sanding.
To my knowledge, no, because Rich, I, uh, my driveway, and every time I get sanded, it's an additional charge. But will you check on that?
Sure.
Thank you.
I mean, they're pretty flat and level, it's not.
Yeah.
It's not like going up into something, so I don't know that sanding is as important.
But if somebody falls in. Yeah, so, we can check on that. At this rate, we don't have much snow.
Yeah, so we don't, you already.
Oh, sorry, it's five fifty for the lot one seventy-one, we amend to.
I amend my motion to one thousand fifty.
You amend, you set that, Dan?
Yeah.
Any other comments? All in favor? Aye, aye.
Right, thank you.
Uh, next, we need to schedule the half-year review with Linda Sch, Linda Sherman. She was, she was right there.
There she is.
She's good.
Hey, guys. When do we, when can we all meet and do that? Linda, do you have any times in mind that work well for you?
I I would say if we could push it out a couple of weeks at least. If not, uh, the old saying, my dog ate my homework. My cat tore up my, uh, review, so I have to piece that together. So.
Get another copy from Jeanette.
Yes, yeah, I will, I will. Um, so, end of the month, I I want to be able to spend some time and write my comments like we had spoke about, so, uh, I guess anytime, I know it's hard for y'all to get together, um, evening, daytime, I'm, anytime.
I'm gonna wanna try to do it immediately before.
Um, so are you talking the first week of February? Linda, is that what you're asking?
Sure, that'd be good.
Okay.
Uh, uh, I I know, I I mean, is the, during the day easier or night?
Not easy for Joe, and it's not easy in the mornings for Dan and Tyler.
Right, so what about a Friday, well, I don't know, Thursday?
Oh, we could do the day. But Dan works. How about Thursday at eight?
Uh, I could only do it via Zoom at eight, eight, yeah. I'm gonna be in Colorado first weekend, but.
You are, okay.
About the last, what about the?
That's fine.
We can Zoom.
Well, Zoom at six A M.
It could be just a Zoom, it could be a Zoom meeting.
Okay, that's fine.
I could just. Own or whatever, it's just maybe easier.
We could all Zoom. We could all Zoom, right. This is an executive session.
It's an executive session, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, what time?
Thursday.
But you'll be in Colorado, which is two hours, whatever, six A M, free? You'll be there.
Better for me.
Okay, let's tentatively shoot for February second at eight A M.
February.
Oh, wait, that's by town.
Oh.
That's by.
Can we do Wednesday or Friday? Or go to the next week?
I don't. How about February ninth?
I'm, I, you guys, I'm having a hard time hearing, it's not good reception.
February ninth? At eight, the next Thursday.
The next Thursday, the ninth at eight?
Yeah, well, you said, okay, okay, that, that you're off on Thursdays, okay, the ninth at eight A M.
That's fine.
Okay, good. Okay. New business.
Eight, midnight.
Tonight, at eight A M. New business. Oh.
Item D.
Oh, right, uh, the assistant assessor has resigned, and we need approval, we're gonna need to give approval to advertise for a replacement. I think we should really look at what the wording of the the advertisement is, and also the, a a job description.
Linda, Linda, I sent Linda back the initial description she sent to me to write the copy for the ad. Um, because the late, the last ad was for fire department and assessors office, so this is just
For assessor.
For assessor's office, so I, when she gets back to me with some bullet points, I can put together one of them.
Does, um, Joe, do you want to see the, your liaison, the, the ad, what they're, we're gonna advertise for?
Sure.
Okay, so I can, I can copy it back to Linda and Joe?
So we're just doing as an assessor now, no, are we gonna try and do again with the fire? No.
No. I didn't work.
Good.
Okay.
Well, I wouldn't say it didn't work, but, because both parties were happy, but it just was very short-lived.
Do we want, does the whole board want to see the, what we're advertising for, or just authorize it if it goes through Joe and Sarah, if we can, and Linda, that we can authorize the advertisement, uh, of the position? And. Okay, Linda?
So, yeah, I'm, I'm looking to sort of revamp that whole thing and did some research online. There is a, a difference between assessor clerk and assessor assistant. I think for this purpose, I'm, I'm going to opt to go with the assessor clerk and, uh, design the job description around that. I've reached out to towns that I know that have assessor clerks, and they've shared with me copies of their job description, so I, I think what I was looking for tonight was approval to move ahead, to put something together, and then, uh, I can send it to Sarah and copy Joe on it also, um, to get feedback as to where, there's a job description and then the ad, so, right, so, um, and I usually pick Jeanette's brain too, because she's great at that. Um, so if that is okay, that's what I'm looking for tonight.
Yeah, Sarah?
I was just gonna say, if Linda, if you give me the job description, I can write the ad and then send it back to you and to Joe. So you don't have to write the ad. I just, what qualifications you're looking for and and the parameters and what you're expecting in terms of hours.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
Well, this makes it a little more complicated for me, because I don't know the difference between the clerk and the assistant, so I'm gonna need to understand that as well, so, I guess. I don't want to take it back in front of the board, uh, I, so that we have an, we have an understanding of what we're, of the person we're, you know, of the job. Yes, Sarah?
Linda, can you, can you either pull from your sort of resources or write up a very brief description of the difference between the two positions? And share it with the board, and then we'll know, rather than having to, and then we can lose, then if it's not clear, we can come into the next meeting with our questions already formed. And ask them another two weeks.
The short answer would be yes.
Okay. Any other questions of Linda? Yes, so, so, get up, get that, putting that stuff together, and we'll revisit it at the next board.
Okay, awesome.
Thanks, Linda.
Thank you.
All right. New business now. We're gonna authorize the tax sale for January nineteenth and town agent to act as needed. So, uh, Linda Holland is our town agent, the tax sale is Thursday, and, uh, we need to authorize her to get, act on our behalf, is something we want to make that motion?
I move that we authorize Linda Holland to act as the town agent at the January nineteenth tax sale.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we need to consider town meeting with the possible legislation, uh, in postponing the date. Uh, last year, uh, the legislature met, and the first week they made, um, they passed some legislation that allowed for towns to do move dates, go Zoom, do all kinds of different things. And to my knowledge, they haven't done that yet, and it's getting late. Um, I would like to move forward for March seventh, and just, we're, we're ready almost, um, but we, it, I think it would be nice to get back to the regular date, that's my two cents, I'm open for other input, yes, Sarah.
Can we ask Andy what he thinks?
Sure, Andy, what do you think?
I agree, I agree, I'm ready to get back to, uh, the town hall on March seventh, ten A M, like old times. Um, having said that, I'm no COVID expert, um, and I don't have a crystal ball, but I'm thinking we're gonna be fine.
Anybody else have any other feelings about this?
Seth, will we offer Zoom for people to attend if they're concerned about?
So, I don't believe, and if there is emergency legislation out in the city, but I don't believe anybody will be allowed to participate.
Right.
But usually you have like a live feed kind of a thing, like the local radio, TV station covering it, kind of idea, would be.
Yeah, I, that, I was, I kind of assumed that that was the, the format, but it would at least allow people to know what's going on if they were um, uncomfortable about being in close quarters.
We, we believe we did Zoom it just a video it last year, so we could put it up on YouTube, but I guess somebody could run up to the town hall really fast if they saw something that was coming up and it was getting.
Really alarming.
Yes, that they could run down to the town hall. So, do we want to, at this point, set our dates for town meeting and pre-town meeting and location?
Uh, so, town meeting would be March seventh. At the Dover Town Hall, would that make pre-town meeting February twenty-eighth?
It would.
Okay, so I make a motion that we hold pre-town meeting February twenty-eighth at the Dover Town Hall, and town meeting, uh, March seventh, also in Dover. Second, what, what is it, Andy?
Um.
On that, yeah.
The school district meeting, having a, uh, special meeting to change their articles of agreement, we were moving with that, on the twenty-seventh, and their special meeting to change the date is on the twenty-eighth in the evening in Woodsboro.
Oh. Well, pre-town meeting isn't set in stone.
No, could we do it maybe on the first, on the Wednesday instead? Pre-town?
What time is their meeting?
I just got the warning.
Six thirty, six, six.
Right, when you.
We're meeting in six to count out.
Oh, so it's, okay. I'm.
Board, are you okay with March first?
So that.
At six?
That meeting's up here this year? It's in Woodsboro, Woodsboro this year.
So, am I a paid woman, am I a feminist?
Sure.
Yeah, so I amend my motion to hold pre-town meeting on March first at the Dover Town Hall at six P M. And keep the town meeting on March, uh.
At ten A M.
At ten A M.
Dover Town Hall.
Dover Town Hall.
Second. Any other comments? All in favor? Aye, aye. Okay. Uh, well, we can't approve the warning either, because we don't have the right budget figures in, so we are gonna skip over approving the town meeting warning. Okay, so that means economic development. Hi, Eric.
Hello.
Um, so this is the signage application for review and possible approval for dear full value.
We'll be deferring that, because we didn't receive all the documentation that we need for this meeting to, for that.
Okay.
Correct.
Next is updated meeting equipment.
Okay, so presented a number to you guys to replace our, our meeting equipment, so when we first started doing these type of meetings beginning COVID, we thought, you know, this is a temporary situation, we can get this together now, and it'll work for what we need it to do. Um, at this point, it's, it's clear to us that these meetings will continue to be hybrid, um, and our, our system, you know, while working, is not state-of-the-art or the easiest to use. Uh, so what we'd like to do is to replace the peripherals here, uh, the screen larger, mounted on the wall with a, a high-definition camera and some wire hiding here to protect the space, so, uh, economic development is also using this space for meetings, there's outside organizations that have been using this space for meetings, and we feel that it's a, you know, a qualified use of economic development funds to, you know, to have these meetings be more public by allowing them to be hybrid, and also to have those other meetings here, so, uh, we'd like to go ahead and move forward with basically replacing our meeting setup here with some newer equipment.
Damn, sound equipment is already important. Yeah, because half the time you can't hear it when Zooming.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, even, even just the sound coming from a new monitor, uh, is going to be much improved over, I mean, this is.
Those picking up the audience.
Yeah, I think, uh, microphone-wise, this was the solution that was coming, we're not, we're not talking about, I mean, that later down the road, maybe we can talk about replacing that, this is literally just to replace these peripherals over here to make it easier, you know, on you guys and the crowd to see what's going on.
Well, how about this camera?
Uh, so, that was the other part that I, I should have given to you guys, we can absolutely purchase a second, um, of the wide-angle four K cameras for the one sixty-nine ninety-nine to replace this back here. Uh, and that would give us, you know, the wire angle, it would make it easier to see who's in the room when you're, when you're on. So it would be more than the six thirty, it would be six thirty, eight thirty-seven, plus the one sixty-nine ninety-nine, I mean, um, and if we were to improve it, maybe, you know, three dollars over, just in case a price changes before I click buy.
Do you agree with the total? Actually, no.
Sorry.
Give me the figures again?
So the total for just this system was six thirty, eight thirty-seven?
Yeah. Very.
Okay.
Uh, there it is, okay, and then what's the other figure, one sixteen? So, nine seventy-eight thirty-five, so what did we say after one thousand? Um, oh, no, wait a minute, no, it double counted something.
Eight oh.
Eight oh eight thirty, eight oh eight thirty-six. So fix it up to eight fifty.
Anybody have any comments? Um, my only comment is, if we're doing this, it is really hard, it may be easier with the, it mounted up fire, to see, like, if Scott was sitting there, I can't see the monitor at all, so I don't see people with their hand up, um, so I'd like, I don't know, if we can reconfigure the room a little, um, to make it a little bit more so that you don't have to look like this all the time, the lowness of this name.
I, I think what we'll do is we'll explore what it, how it works with the new screen being up there, and if it's still difficult, then we can address, you know, moving the room.
You have the screen up high, how big a screener you have?
It's sixty-five inches, it's much larger.
Oh, nice.
Here, size of that. Uh, eighty, forty, forty-two.
Yeah, forty-two.
Yeah.
Okay. You want, you want to make a motion, Sarah?
We have plans.
So I move, then we authorize economic development to spend up to eight hundred fifty dollars for the upgraded meeting equipment. Remote meeting. Second.
Any other comments, anybody from the public? All in favor? Aye, aye.
I think we go above the, the board ones.
No, so the board, we have planned this on, with all of this, if we can, we'll condate the new equipment, so we'll have that here ASAP, we've already talked about Dave coming down and getting everything ready and all, still good, well.
Okay.
That might be two.
Yeah, your next item.
Five, up here.
The next item is the plaque mounting of the Phil Bartlett plaque up at the Dover Town Forest, and Eric had some quotes.
Uh, so I, I presented you guys three quotes, um, all of them are, none of them offer the same exact thing, right, like, yeah, the audience is cutting in and mounting into the stone, uh, it looks like the, um, the Vermont stone sculpturing was to, to The Vermont Stone Sculpturing was to. Basically flatten out to the stone and then clean the stone after. So similar um. To Abiati, but then additional cleaning. And then the the awkward Tommy Hathaway to to prepare the project for us and return for some. Um, volunteer hours or community service hours rather for the state of Vermont. Um, so I. I don't know what the opinions are.
So just for the public's information, so that two and one is no charge. Just documenting that. Testifying that their volunteer hours have been given, whatever.
Whatever.
Another one is. Twenty eight seventy seven and then cleaning for four ninety five. So that brings it up around thirty four hundred dollars. And the other one is. For two thousand and three thousand seventy eight dollars. So we have a zero.
Huh? Three thousand one seventy.
Three one seventy. So we have three. Two that are very similar in price um and one that is no charge. And the. For four more things, um. This is Tommy's family owned a local monument company for many years. He has strong affiliation with the property. So. Um, I guess he knows what he's doing. I I don't know who he is.
I think all three of them are going to end up, you know, resulting in us having the plaque mounted as it should be on the rock. Right? I don't think any one of these, you know, was a was a bargain basement uh type of quote, I think, all of it. They all know how to mount a plaque. Um, so that's why I didn't necessarily have an opinion for the board. I'm just going to let you decide how you want to proceed.
No, Sarah.
Um, so but there's a difference in the techniques that um that Abiati and um. Um. Vermont Stone Sculpturing.
Correct.
Um. So. Do we know? Sinking the plaques at all the bottom edges would be below the stone surface? Are they both, so? Vermont Stone Sculpture says it's a fluff plaque, meaning it would sit on top.
On the face.
Well, no, you keep you finish and I'm gonna.
Yeah, on the on the face of the rock is how I how I.
And then I'll be others with these something in.
That's that's how Andy might have.
Andy.
Yeah, so uh Eric, I don't I don't recall the names of the different people. Giving bids, but. Everybody I spoke with, I made sure it was a uh. They were gonna cut or. Or weave into the rock and mount. The plaque into the rock so that it was uh. It was flush and not mounted, um. You know, without cutting into the rock, which I think would be a very bad idea to not actually have it set into the rock. But I don't know, I don't know the one you're talking about that plucked mounted is one of the quotes I got, Eric.
It is. That's the Vermont store.
No, that's.
So that's.
Uh, setting the rock as well.
So then tip of same same mountain style then I guess Sarah, but would that additional be with me?
Any other comments about? Um. These three companies who. Um, wants to do the yes, the black installation? Yes, Sarah.
I'm happy to help Mr. Hathaway with his um. Community service hours, but I'm just would be curious to get a more specific. Description of how he's gonna do the work. Then if it's going to be as we're asking. Um, because he can just, you know, it's kind of hard when you're not paying somebody if they don't do the job the way you want. You can't, there's nothing to withhold. So if if we could get clarification on the on technique or the approach he's planning to use. I would feel more comfortable.
Uh, yeah, so uh I contacted Tommy, um. Not knowing that his family business was no longer in existence. I explained the uh what we needed in detail. He said he still had all the tools from the family business and could definitely do what we wanted. Um, but Sarah, um, I don't know what. Uh, I don't know what. Kind of um insurance or I I know nothing much about uh Tommy's operation. Um, you know, if you were interested in saving some money, uh wanted to take a chance on that, um. You know, uh. Probably good off. He's uh seems like a nice guy, um. But I understand that you may have reservations regarding uh. You know. I wrote that up, right?
Hmm.
Um. It's up to you. If you wanna ask him to come in and and speak with him. You know, uh, I can certainly call him and ask him to do that. Of you.
Um, just bear in mind, it might be a workers comp issue. Well, we'll see T defense. Cause he may have to submit. You know, his. Tax ID number. So I don't know.
He's not doing.
I know, but I don't know how that he would still be doing the work for us, so. We would have to put him on our workers comp. I just, you know, somebody got hurt, skin issue.
Fair enough. Good, good point.
We've got a lot of people who volunteer. In services.
Hey, I'm just telling you what the LCT were taking after me for.
So he currently isn't working in this stone monument mounting business? Does that, does anybody know?
Uh, no, he isn't. Uh, he has a business making uh. A stone, daily pop stone board game type thing he was saying. He's working with stone, um. He was married up there. If you've been down to the cave and noticed the rockwork down there, the tarot thing and the and steps. Um, that's all him, um. You know, uh, he is still, um. He's not. A big stone monument company, um, and. I'm not sure.
Well, I think that in my. Obviously, he does have an affinity for the property and would do the, I think, the best job he probably could. I don't know about Marco's concern about. I mean, it could be. I don't, I don't know. Pursue that and and see if we, if it if it checks all the boxes that um. And because the other two, as far as I know, have no. Personal.
Investment.
Yeah, in in the Dover Town Forest, then so it would be nice. Potentially. Yes, Jim.
If this is a community service. Which. Is quickly thinking about it. State uses people. The community service. All of the places where the deputy have parish or.
Hmm.
Elder care or anything like that. So. If insurance becomes a big issue on that. Come for me.
Hmm. True.
I can get an answer on.
I mean, they're out on ninety, you know, they're any, they're all over. It it would be nice to have this guy constantly do it because he does care if it works.
We do community service picking up track on the road.
Yeah.
So I don't, I don't. Not not saying. I'm concerned, but I'm not.
You know, so green up.
Maybe something where if he is doing whatever work profound, maybe we have a whole harmless agreeing or something, just to protect. S- s- case something happened. Which is a pretty easy document to. Have done.
Eric.
Yeah, so I mean, we we've come this far, right? Um, waiting for bids and things like that. I think we can wait a little bit longer while I collect the rest of this information. And then once I have. The full information on that third option.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Then we can make a decision to move forward.
I wouldn't say we're interested in. Lower community service pricing. As long as it's done.
Very nice, very nicely put there, Joe.
I try.
Okay, so do you understand, Eric? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Or Sarah, and could I could I also request a brief, like a one paragraph description of the methodology that he's going to use? So we have that in writing.
Sure. Okay. Uh, now we're moving on to questions on the con- conservation commission from the Trails and Rec Committee. Um, is my understanding that that a list has been presented to the Trailers from from the Trails and Rec Committee to the Conservation Commission and they're meeting on the twenty seventh. And we'll discuss it with that meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Um, and. Yes.
I would hope in advance that meeting that the study board might take ten minutes of their time. And just. Listen or view on Zoom. The last ten minutes of the last Trail and Recreation meeting. Just to get some background on this, I think it might be reformable.
I know I've watched it. I know Sarah attended it. Um, I watch all of them because I just think it's important to to know what's going on. But the rest of the board, I would.
I read the minutes. But I haven't.
It.
Watched the video.
I think I think the minutes don't accurately.
They don't capture your flavor.
Yeah. It's it's hard.
After the minutes are inaccurate. Okay, but it made the terrible conversation.
Yes.
Mark.
Okay.
Mike, bring something today.
Thank you.
No, I think that that was a a good piece of um advice. Thank you.
I know you're always really too busy to.
Hold on, I'm actually driving down to see my mom, so I'll just plug in that sound. Listen to the whole.
There you go.
Those are available on the.
And you'll be so, you'll be so riveted, you will never fall asleep.
Recordings for those meetings are available on discoverdober.com.
Okay. Um, so then, um. What time is that meeting? Do we uh the Conservation Commission with?
New.
New.
Here.
Okay. Um, and then we're gonna, um, the RFP process question from the Trails and Rec Committee. This also came out of that meeting.
Yeah, so a question was presented uh to me to present to you uh regarding my process in economic development for how I release. Score and make recommendations on RFPs or accused to the board. Uh, they asked, um. You know, what the precedent was for me to be able to. You know, present an RFP to you, have you guys approve it for it to be launched to the public, um, and then scored in that recommendation made by my office or me. And to you guys. Um. If you don't mind, I'll explain my reasoning behind the way I did it. And then if you if you feel that there's a better way or a different way that it should be done, please file it's uh. Your feelings. Uh, according to the Trails and Recreation Committee chart. Um, this group, you know, is advisory in in nature, and that's that's the role of this group, okay? Um, you know, to make recommendations to you guys based on um. How things relate to the Weston and Sampson plan that we paid for. Okay, so. Uh. Item number two uh in the chart. Gives the that committee, um, you know, the task to review incoming projects. To make sure that they align with the goals and the the outcomes, again, that are that are presented to us in the Weston and Sampson plan. From there, typically I would bring the recommendation to you all. You would, you know, what if either approved or not approved that we move forward. And from there, I. Launch the RFP the same way we do with all of our RFPs, either the website or anything else we put out. Or marketing and things like that. Uh, they're. Come back, they are scored, you know, the same way for each one. There's a scoring rubric for each one. Uh, and that's, you know, those numbers make up the recommendation that we present to you guys. Additionally, um, with all the RFPs that we've done, we've never just said. Here's our scores, pick this one, right? It's always here's our scores and here are the top. However, many, I think with the websites, it was five, three, um, you know, with the trails, we only had the two applicants, but I showed you both applicants. Their responses to that on a pay. So as far as precedent, uh, as far as process, I feel that's the way that it's been done. Again, if. If you don't approve of the way that it's been done or feel that there needs to be a change. The question was, you know, whether or not this Trails and Recreation Committee should have the say. To review and to present recommendations on those RFPs as they go out and come back.
Well, your office also scores. All kinds of projects, whether it's a sign. Whether it's a. Uh, or do it. I mean, you're constantly scoring all kinds, running everything through rubrics between you and Shannon. And I, um. I think that that consistency is important. I I frankly think think that the Trails and Rec Committee's. Portion of it is before it goes to the RFP process and uh before. Once, once the, once they're out, then. The then you who are re-employed to do this. Score them. And am I not mine? They've never scored. The Trails and Rec Committee has never scored a um. RFP or RQ. Am I wrong?
You know. Before this incarnation of the committee. The the group scored the Westman and Sampson, the one that when we sent that out. They were the the informal Trails Committee that didn't, that is not what we have now. Um, was participated in making the determination about which company to hire. And make the recommendation. To the. But I agree, I I think at this point. It makes more, much more sense for. Since the Trails Committee is supposed to be advisory in nature, they should be advising. And that includes prior to say, you know, um. Eric says we're going to need to do an RFP for Horse Hill. And people say, well, I want to make sure it includes X, Y, and Z. Great. Once that information is given, given to Eric, he writes the RFP, make sure the board has no issue with it. He sends it out, he collects the information from the from the responses. Scores it and presents it to the select groups. I don't think at that point the Trails Committee is involved.
Eric.
Yeah, I mean, in particular with this Horse Hill project, I mean, this this is something that was signed off by the Trails Committee back when we applied for the VORAC grant that we would be. Moving forward with this project in this iteration, you know, what back when that happened. Uh, it took us a little while to get the RFPs together after we weren't approved for that VORAC grant. But I mean, this conversation has been ongoing for a long time. Uh, the other thing about our RFP process is that it's very public and it's very open. There are multiple. Uh, you know, opportunities for people to comment or ask questions. Uh, whether it be here at a public meeting, at Trails at a public meeting, or privately in my office, um. You know, you guys saw the RFPs before they went out the first time in a public meeting. I've spoken to them many times publicly at the Trail meetings. And will continue to do so with any RFPs we put out pertaining to trails. Um, you know, I, this is not a. A a closed door type of situation. We've been very open and transparent about what we were trying to do on Horse Hill and the way we want to do it. So I will continue to do that. Uh, I just think that this is the process that should be followed in terms of making, you know. When it comes to us recommending that the select would spend a very specific amount of money on a very specific product, I think those recommendations. Should be coming from the people you paid. To make those recommendations.
Other comments about the scoring of the RFPs or RQs? Okay, I guess we are happy with the process and um continuing.
Thanks for informing us.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, do you have anything else for us to?
Uh, the distal RFP flows the other day. There were twice as many. Missions this time as it was the first time around. We received uh. Submissions from three world class and. I think world champion disc golfers um and designers, so uh much better this time around. So we'll have recommendations.
Great. Hmm, thank you. Uh, we have the consent agenda. So we need to approve minutes from January third and January fourth. And have minutes to. So we have a correction in January. Okay, let me just look here. Um, okay, so everybody was here. For all the meetings, so that's fine. All right, so so let's make up, let. Okay, fine.
Okay, so I make motion approve the minutes of January third.
Second. Any comments, corrections? No, she's doing the. All favor?
Okay, January fourth.
Um, yeah. Yeah.
Did I make a motion to make a correction?
And then we make a correction.
Okay. So I make a motion to approve the minutes of January fourth.
Second.
Okay. With the following correction. Okay. Uh, I made a comment that evening that we have the third most expensive town-supported library in the state. That is not an accurate statement.
Oh.
Um, our library has the second highest per capita cost in the state.
In the state.
Which is different than, I'm absolutely.
And so I would say that that is not a correction to the minutes, cause the minutes are what were said, but this can be a footnote.
Okay.
In these minutes, that it, that that's amended, that you, you corrected the information presented.
Okay.
Okay. But the minutes are what happened at the meeting.
Gotcha.
So is that correct? And that would you say?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, change what you said.
So we can accept the minutes and then we will
Ask any teenager.
Do an update of the information presented. So all favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Sarah, for letting us know that. Okay. Now we also have to approve the warrants from January seventh, which are one hundred thirteen thousand, two hundred fifty nine dollars and sixty seven cents.
So moved.
But again.
Give it to Joe.
Okay.
All in favor?
No.
Awesome. You.
Oh, I couldn't leave this earlier either. So, uh, we have the letter, we have FYI, letter of appreciation from the Westover Congressional Church's Loose Knit Group. Um, they are thanking the Dover Select Board, um, on behalf of the Westover Congressional Church for use of Dover Town Hall for two fundraising events this past fall. We held our super supper in October when we served soup from local restaurants and group members attendees to the events, so they had made bowl to take home. And we made apple and pumpkin fries in the well equipped kitchen. Both of these events raised, helped to raise funds for our church and community. Dover is fortunate to have this facility for the use of the community. We appreciate the ability of, of our group to use it basically. And thank you. Sincerely, Barbara Martin. Good steak, bro. Very nice. Thank you.
It's a secret. Thank you, Barbara. The super, super simple was awesome.
Great. So we also have COVID tests available at the Dover Town Office with extended, extended expiration dates. Seems like all the COVID kits are all getting extra expiration.
Too large.
So come get them.
Come get them, please.
So Planning Commission is going to meet on the twenty third at six thirty PM. The Trails and Rec Committee is going to meet on February fifteenth at six thirty PM. Pre-town meeting is going to be Wednesday, March first at six PM. And town meeting is going to be Tuesday, March seventh, ten AM Dover Town Hall. Right. Liaison reports. Do we have any? Do we need an executive session? Oh, do you want, yeah, something?
No, I'm just wanting to give you the fact you.
Nope. I would.
He has a he has a nine AM and eleven AM in the day. He should be done by one P. So are we saying tomorrow, Thursday?
Yeah, yes. So that, um, Joe may attend.
Okay.
For this Thursday?
Day after tomorrow?
Thursday.
Four.
Right. One, four, eight, four, you know.
Yes.
Okay. All right. And so I don't think we need an executive session. Anybody? Well, on that now, I'd like to adjourn the meeting at six one four PM. Seven twenty or seven, like, I think I'm on my adjournment to seven.
Budget is up, but we don't have what it was. We just.